Members and officers present virtually can see and hear us. Mike, if you could.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening. Welcome to colleagues this evening. Obviously, I've confirmed your audio and videos working correctly, Chair. So going through in sequence, so in terms of participants, councillor Roberts, good evening. Can you hear us?
Yep, I can hear you.
Excellent, thank you. Councillor Banks, good evening. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. Councillor Crofts, good evening.
Good evening. Yes, I can hear you loud and clear.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy, similarly, good evening.
Yes, fine.
Thank you. Has councillor Kushner joined us at this stage? I'm not seeing a listed present, in which case I'll move on. Councillor O'Brien, good evening. Can you hear us?
Good time, thank you, Mike.
Excellent, thank you. Councillor Byrne, welcome. Can you hear us okay?
Thanks, Mike. Yes, I can hear you well.
Thank you. Good evening, councillor Makinsen. Can you hear us okay?
Good evening, Mike. Yes, I can hear you fine.
Thank you. Councillor Jennings?
Yes, good evening, everybody.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to our acting mayor, councillor Simon. Can you hear us okay?
I can hear you fine. Thanks, Mike.
I have a number of additional members also in the form of the one of our mayoral leads, councillor Jane Corbett. Welcome. Can you hear us okay? Jane, if you could unmute your microphone just to confirm, otherwise I'll move on to other colleagues, which in this instance include councillor Hanson.
Thank you, Michael. Just up there.
Thank you. Councillor Smead.
Okay, Mike. Yeah. Good evening, everyone.
And finally councillor Shortall.
Yes, thanks, Mike. Yes, again.
That's smashing. I believe councillor Corbett's now visible as well now. Jane, if you could just confirm. Thank you. That's excellent. I'll now revert over to you, Chair. Thank you.
Very much, and thank you, everyone. It's good to see you all. I also remind officers and members on some housekeeping elements, please leave your microphone on mute during the meeting until you want to comment. In addition, can officers also turn off their webcams unless they are addressing the committee directly? Once a member has spoken, please ensure you mute your mic again so the audio remains clear. When members and officers do wish to speak, the easiest way to do this is to either use the hands-up function or to try and draw my attention or the attention of Mike to the camera, or to the screen, I should say. When I do bring you in, please then do on mute, say your name, introduce yourself, and allow a brief pause while we ensure you are visible on screen. Once you have spoken, please make sure that you lower the hand function. Can I advise members at this stage that no apologies for absence have been submitted? With that, I'd like to move to item number two, declaration of interests. Can I ask if members have any interests to declare pertaining to the item of business on the agenda? With that, I will move to item number three. Can I direct members' attention, please, to the minutes of the last meeting? They can be found on pages 1 to 15 of the agenda. I will give members a moment or two to peruse those.
Thank you, Chair. If I could just advise of a typographical amendment to the minutes in your published packs, just to ensure that the attendance of councillor Calvin Smead is recorded. It was correctly published on the website, just appears to have been omitted from the actual typed version. So thank you, colleagues.
Those were the minutes held on the 8th, those were the minutes of the meeting held on the 8th of December 2020. Are they agreed as a true record?
Agreed.
Is somebody recording this? Can this meeting be recorded?
Just to confirm, colleagues, for the benefit of production of the minutes, the record of proceedings is recorded and then destroyed shortly thereafter. Thank you.
Thanks for that.
Councillor Banks. Okay. In relation to these minutes, are there any matters arising? There are no indications from members. So with that, can we approve the minutes? Is that agreed? Agreed. Thank you very much. Okay. If I can direct members' attention to what should be item number four. Okay, that is governance, risk and control. I will direct members to pages 15 to 149 on supplementary agenda. Very, very big documents and lots of detail here, and obviously that is very welcome to see. Just to advise members that the report has been circulated to all members of the council, so not just for the committee but for the council, all elected members itself. Now, if I may, once members are comfortable with those documents, can I call on councillor Wendy Simon, the acting mayor, to introduce the report? Thanks, Wendy.
Thanks, Leon. Sorry, there seems to be feedback there. Is that okay? Does that sound all right with people? Yeah, thanks. Welcome, everybody. And I think it's really important, given on the comment Leon has just said, that every member of the council and the general public, because obviously this is a public document, has the opportunity to read this really detailed report that is looking at governance in the city and the control framework around that and the overview. So what we thought would be useful, just to give some oversight, because it is a detailed document, is just for some of the monitoring officers to go through some key aspects of it and highlight those aspects going forward. Also, in relation to that, that members would have the opportunity, obviously, following that, to raise questions and obviously suggest contributions to the improvement plan. I felt it was really important to came to this committee pre-going to Cabinet, so we've got that pre-scrutiny of the document, giving people that opportunity to add to it in advance. And obviously, it's very much a work in progress. And as people are aware, and I know councillor Makinsen asked for clarification before everyone was in, there are some additional meetings of this committee that have been put in place. And we felt rather than spending hours at a time, which can quite often be really difficult for people when they're on a Teams call, particularly if they've got any childcare or caring responsibilities at home to stay on beyond that two hours, that if we had a number of additional meetings that can also cover this, but also any ordinary business, there wouldn't be additional to meetings you already had scheduled. So just to clarify that point. Also, so members are aware, discussions took place on Tuesday of the Member Development Working Group, and they've also agreed to meet monthly going forward, again, to make sure that the training issues that are raised in this report and that ongoing training plan that they've been working on for a period, and I know a number of members have been involved in that, is being pushed forward and delivered. Certainly, that will need to be online to begin with, given in line with, you know, the COVID-19 restrictions that we're all working under at the moment. And again, they'll look at that programme to look at the elements that are best delivered online and easiest online to start with them as well. People may also be aware, or if they're not, that we have been reviewing for a period the elected members' code of conduct and the relevant protocols that sit alongside that, and particularly in light of the new LGA model that was produced as well. So going forward, I'm going to ask each of the monitoring officers to go through a report on the chief executive, just giving some background to the reports and just highlighting some parts of that. So if Tony will be firstly on, if you sort of want to bring him in, and then obviously, unless anyone's got any questions of myself, just on how we're going to oversee this at this point.
No, I'm very happy to move to the presentation itself. I think that may in the first instance answer some of the questions that members might have, and then we can have quite a wide range of discussion and obviously note our own, because I think it's very, as you alluded to itself, it's very important that this committee has a role, not just tonight, but moving forward and into the next municipal year as well. So I appreciate those comments. And obviously, one thing we will be doing as a committee is having ideas about what members want to get on the agenda as well going forward. I think that's absolutely critical, and that's certainly something that I'll be alluding to later. But for now, if we're agreeable, I think we see the presentation and we base the questions on that. So Tony, I don't know if it's questionable over to you then. You can start.
Yeah, I think Mike has put in the presentation up, the presentation, Chair, and good afternoon, everybody. If I can start off then with the first slide or the next slide, one after that, if that's okay. Yep, great. Thank you. Just in terms of the background to this, members will be aware that for the last couple of years, we've been working on a range of things to strengthen the council's controls, grip, if you like, and governance around property and regeneration in particular, and other areas of council business. And that includes the changes that we made when I first became chief executive in terms of some staffing changes and reporting lines at a management level. A really in-depth piece of work that members undertook themselves with support around tapping fractional investment in the city, which is now enshrined in council policy, significant work around due diligence with developers and other parties that we were working with, where council landers involved. All of those things, together with a range of other things, have been used to strengthen the council's controls. And this has been ongoing work for the last couple of years. It's clear that we have some significant challenges in this area. There's no point in beating about the bush, Chair. There's been a major police investigation ongoing for over a year. There've been three rounds of arrests linked to that. I think I'm right in saying 11 people in total have been arrested. Nobody's been charged at this point, but that investigation is very much live and is ongoing. As a result of the last round of arrests at the beginning of December, we had a formal letter from the Ministry of Housing, Communities and Local Government to me, which is on the government website, and members have a copy of that, asking some questions. And we submitted a response to the government. As a result of that response and discussions that were ongoing, the Secretary of State decided that we will be subject to a statutory inspection. That process has now started and is led by Max Callas, CBE, who is on site with his team now. And that inspection is likely to last for the next three months. Max has been asked to report back to the Secretary of State by the end of March with recommendations. The inspection is broadly covering three areas: what's happened in Liverpool with regard to property management, regeneration, highways, contracts and planning over the last five years; what has the council done about it; and then the key question that Max needs to make any recommendations to the Secretary of State about further action required to safeguard best value for the citizens of Liverpool. And as I said, that work is ongoing, and we're working closely with Max and his team. And I've no doubt that a number of people involved in the meeting today will be part of that process. One of the things that we wanted to do from the outset is to set out on the record all of the work that we've done to strengthen controls and governance around these areas. And we'll take you through some of the detail of that a little bit later. We're also really clear that this isn't an officer response. This has to be a whole council response. And really important that the views and insights and inputs from members, as it has been throughout the improvement journey so far, are contained. We've talked to Wendy and the Cabinet about the role that they're going to play in this. And it's really important, we believe, for this select committee to play a key role in both feeding into the improvements themselves and designing the improvement plan, commenting, challenging, et cetera, but also in monitoring performance against it and making sure there's real accountability for delivery against the plan. Statutory officers group, which is the group of senior council officers, myself as head of paid service, Jeanette as monitoring officer, Mel as the section 151 officer, and Chris as the head of audit and governance, work together in managerial terms to oversee governance. And we will be working closely with you all and with the management team of the council. So Jeanette will say more about that later. We have agreement from both SIPF and the Local Government Association to act as critical friends on our improvement journey, and conversations are started with them as well. We want to be challenged. We want to make sure we don't leave any stones unturned in making sure that we were as robust as we possibly can be in this very, very important area. And of course, we're working in full cooperation with Merseyside Police in terms of their investigation, as we have been from the start of that investigation. As a result of, it won't be lost on anybody, Chair, that on top of the inspection and the work that we're doing in taking forward the improvement plan, we have a range of other challenges at the moment, not least responding to the COVID crisis and making sure we're preparing the council and the wider city for recovery once the crisis is over, and a range of other challenges that we're facing. So in light of that, we've asked for some support from the combined authority, and three senior officers from the combined authority have seconded into the council to support us on regeneration and on highways, to give us more capacity as we go through this, because we have some gaps at the moment. And that is really, really important. And all of those things taken together, I think, will create a really robust approach to this, to this whole improvement journey. What I would say as well, before I hand over to Mel, is that whilst the main role of the inspection team, of course, is as I've outlined, and it's about a report to the Secretary of State, given the experience of Max and his colleagues, we want to make the most of their time here and get any insights, not just waiting for the recommendations in the formal report, but from the dialogue we have with them, get any insights and ideas that can help us strengthen our improvement plan, as we will get from our critical friends to move forward. And I can say really positively, there's already been a couple of very good suggestions from the inspection team, one around separating our property standing orders from our general contract standing orders, and the other around having a consistent approach to professional standards for all the RICS qualified colleagues we have. That's the Royal Institution of Chartered Surveyors, because we have people in the regen department as well as in asset management in that discipline, to make sure there's professional standards, continuing professional development and coordination of that activity across the council. And we're really happy to pick up those suggestions and build them into the improvement plan, which we will be doing. And I think you can see immediately that we see the improvement plan as being a live document, which will continue to evolve over the coming months. And we want to make sure, as I said, we leave no stones unturned as we embark, well, as we continue on the improvement journey that we embarked upon a couple of years ago. I'll pause there, Chair. Very happy to answer questions, and then Mel will come in and pick up the budget and financial position to start off with. Chair, I think you're on mute.
Sorry, everyone. I'm off mute now. I'll start again. I'll bring councillor Banks in in a moment. If I may, just firstly thank the chief executive, Tony, for those comments. I think what was particularly reassuring was the candour. Yes, this is a problem. We acknowledge that. But there's value to be added in this as well, in terms of how we improve. I think what is also reassuring is this commitment to the role of audit and governance in taking this forward and monitoring this, monitoring the performance. What is really, really clear in the four areas are the KPIs, which are very measurable, time-bound and hopefully deliverable. And I think having those here today is a starting point. And we acknowledge it to work in document, that that does help the work of the committee in making sure that we are delivering. One final comment I would make is, given that the ongoing role of audit and governance in this is very clear, it's important that it incumbent on us as a committee to match, and all of us as members, to ensure that we match that with the quality of our scrutiny going forward. And that is the key word, scrutiny. It's not speculation. It is scrutiny. So I'd like to thank Tony for those initial comments. More members, at least, has indicated that they want to speak. So I'm going to pass over to councillor Banks now. And if you want to come in, councillor Banks.
Okay. Thanks for that, Chair. Tony, thanks for that outline. We talked about the improvement plan, and then we talked about strengthening controls and changes that are going to be made. Now, seeing that this city has gone through 10 years of brutal cuts, right, and then we're in the middle of a pandemic, do we have the staff to come in? Do we have the staff to deliver these changes and make these improvements? And I'm thinking about the different departments. I'm not talking about the support from the combined authority. And within this plan, do we have a plan post-COVID? And do we have the staff in all the different departments? Because, as you know, the cuts have been made in all those departments to deliver what we've been delivering. And I'll go back to the last couple of years. We've done really, really well. But going forward now, because we're in a pandemic and what's been happening, do we have the staff? Thanks, Chair.
Thanks, councillor Banks. Tony, would you like to?
Yeah. Chair, a really good question from councillor Banks, because it's one thing having a plan, but we have to be able to resource it and implement it. The, just to clarify, the support from the combined authority is to second people in, so they'll be working for us and adding to our staffing compromise in two key areas. I'm very confident that we have the resources in place to be able to take this work forward. It's really, really important that we do. It's very important, in my view, and I'm sure members will agree with this, that the public can have confidence in the council's ability to take forward these areas. So we will prioritise this area of work, and there will be some areas of work that we'll come back to a bit later. That won't in any way impinge upon our delivery of the council's political priorities. But it's really important we get this right. We've assessed the capacity that we need to take this forward. We're really confident that we can. And making sure we've got a good process and systems in place and strong governance overseeing that is about being better organised, with teamwork and the right culture in the organisation. It doesn't necessarily lead to a lot of additional work. And I'm very confident that we can actually implement this fully.
Is, you know, we're going to be doing a lot of work over the next 12 months because of COVID now. Are we protecting our staff as well? Because some staff will be, mental health, there's other things that happen in their lives as well as happening in the way. So have we got any, everybody in place to support the staff in all our different departments as well? And that's my last question.
Just to say, really, really important, because I completely agree, the pressure is on. And we have health and wellbeing champions across the council supporting people. This week, we've launched a joint initiative with the Samaritans to support council staff with challenges they're facing, both professionally and in their personal lives. And I've done a video clip for staff today, which will be on our pages, our internet pages, in the next 24 hours. We're taking that really seriously. And for staff directly affected by this, we're putting support measures in place to make sure we look after the wellbeing of our colleagues through what's going to be a difficult period. So again, we're taking that very seriously, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. And I think that support is important. And if I may, just before I bring firstly Wendy Simon and then subsequently councillor O'Brien in, it is also important to understand in terms of support, slightly different point, but in terms of how we support this committee, training will be made available to members of this committee where they feel it is perhaps appropriate. SIPF, for instance, there'll be bespoke trainers to help support members in their ongoing role with scrutiny. So I'd just like to reassure members, if I may, that that is going to be available. Now, Wendy, you've indicated, so if you'd like to come in, please. Have your hand, have your hand gone down? Okay?
No, sorry. Sorry, I put my hands down and did not mute. Trying to do too many things at once. Thanks, Leon. You've covered a number of the points just then in what I was going to say, and also Tony in his point. But I think the whole point of us really strengthening this scrutiny and overview of what we're doing is to look at that process. And if, as Christine's just identified, people feel there are gaps in some areas, it is to raise those and to look at them, so that when we're planning our work programme and our resources going into, you know, the coming year and beyond, is that we're looking at them. And that's the whole point of us being really open and transparent about this process. The training, as you've just indicated, is really important for all councillors. As I said, the Member Development Training Programme, you know, will be enhanced. And we've already spoken, and I know that committee, when it's met and that group, the development group, have talked about certain elements of that training needed to be undertaken by all councillors. And certainly, I think the point you raised, Leon, around specific training for this committee is really, really important. So I think there is a commitment there as well, you know, politically, to push forward. And just, you know, sort of in Tony's overview as well, as well as, you know, speaking to the cabinet, you know, the opposition leaders are also regularly briefed on this work programme and where we are in relation both to the inspection and our improvement plan.
Thanks, Wendy. And just to avoid any lingo, SIPF being the Chartered Institute for Public Finance and Accountancy, I probably should explain that to members, but that is the regulatory body as such that provides or will provide the training. Councillor O'Brien?
Thank you, Chair. I've got really two parts to what I want to say. First of all, I've always welcomed more specifics than generalities, especially on the scrutiny committee. You know, could we name the people from the LCR who are coming? I don't know if that's allowable. I wanted to come in on Christine's point about cost. I sit on the LCR, Combined Authority, overview and scrutiny committee, and I can't get over how much money they have to pay out for all their administrative and professional advice. I must say, they get some very good people, though. So would we be given an idea in the longer term about how much it's going to cost us to use these experts at the LCR, and also how much money we're having to pay out on people who are no longer able to be in post because of these investigations? What I worry about is this, is this going to add significantly to an already existing overspend of getting on to £2 million? So I would be interested to know who the people are, but to understand if you can't say at this stage. But my second point about specifics is, all the time, I do look for people setting objectives. So I think the due diligence committee should be giving us a list of objectives. I think all these other committees should have a list of objectives. And then, as a scrutiny committee, we're in a better position to say whether we've got fair or good value for money, looking at those objectives, looking at the costs. Because it's not just about costs, it's about level of service. Definitely worth paying out, I think, more money to get true expert opinion. So I wonder if we could be guaranteed that we're going to get more specifics in the future, Chair, and Tony?
It's a meeting. Chair, you're on mute again. I'm very happy to come in and answer councillor O'Brien's questions, if that's helpful.
I was just going to add, I think, you know, obviously with all the will in the world, I think it's a reasonable question, within the current financial climate, which we have been talking about for a long time, how possible it is, feasibility. And I think that is a reasonable point to me. Regarding what councillor O'Brien said in respect of the specifics and the KPIs, I would say that this document that we are seeing today, that makes a very, very good start in setting out what they will be over the four key areas. So, sorry, Tony.
Yeah. So let me be clear. Rather than going into too much detail, so I didn't name people, but it's not because I can't. I can be absolutely clear with you that Mark Bowsfield, who's the director of investment and development of the combined authority, is seconded in with us three days a week. Shane Fitzpatrick and Andy Sawyer, who are both senior managers, I don't know their precise job titles at the combined authority, but they're both director level as well. They're seconded in, their specialities in highways and transportation, which were the two areas that we felt we needed to strengthen in the short term. We'll be picking up the element of their salaries on a pro-rata basis whilst they're here. Yes, we are still paying some people who aren't able to be at work at the present time. And I won't go into detail on that, other than to say we're meeting our contractual obligations under their contracts of employment. With regards to detail going forwards, Chair, what we intend to do is to build a clear performance framework around the improvement plan. And we'll agree that with yourselves as a committee and with Cabinet, and make sure that we get into real specifics and you can genuinely hold the organisation to account for the delivery of this. for the delivery of this. And of course, we will get into detail as we go through. What I don't want to do is try to do the presentation before my colleagues have come in, but I'm very happy to pick those questions up again afterwards, if that's okay.
Yeah, I think on that note, can we move to the presentation then?
Yeah, I think it's Mel coming in after me now, Chair.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks, Tony. So actually, the conversation we've just had moves quite nicely into the first element that I wanted to speak about. What has happened over the last two years is there has been a strengthening of resource and configuration of the councils. So the first thing that was done was audit and governance was brought together. The Section 151 officer and the city solicitor now both report directly to the chief exec. That's in line with both the LGA and SIF's best practice. And we have brought in very recently a new assistant director for asset management and Lee's on the call this evening as well, Lee Kinder. So there has been some bolstering of resource in the property area as well. So if people have questions for Lee tonight, he's more than willing to take them. The financial framework we've got in place for the councils has already been object to a peer review, which found it to be robust, but all things, they can be improved. And we are not resting on our laurels there. We're continuously improving the financial framework. We've brought a balanced budget report through to Cabinet this year before Christmas so that we can go out early to consult on specifics, so that when as councillors you make that decision around council tax setting and the budget for next year, you've got all the consultation responses there to consider around the specific saving options as well. We've got a couple of things going on around task and finish and financial procedures. We started this week reviewing some of our procurement procedures with a very short four-week task and finish group around that. And I'm sure the committee will be interested in the outcomes of that group. We are also in the process and have at the minute a draft version of a corporate debt policy, which again, we can bring here. That will go forward with the budget report in February, March time, as will any recommendations around changes to procurement policies that we have. You will remember from November's meeting, early December's meeting, that we got an early VFM conclusion to the, to the accounts for last year, which raised two things for us, which we need to look at and we are reviewing and that you yourself scrutinised. And that was around children's services and the level of reserves. The budget report that will go forward will address both those issues in the statements that I make. And then we've been doing work with SIF on property. So we've got in the implementation plans, you will see some of the actions that have been drawn up there just on the work that SIF have been doing for us. So if we move to the next slide now, Mike, please. So when I came in, I took over property services following two nil assurance reports that had come through from audit, which I think before I came along, you, you had seen as a group. There did, there was a nil assurance report in 2017 and then there was no progress on that report in 2018. So that would give it a second nil assurance. Property team was transferred to finance and resources in 2019. And since that point, I thought it might be useful for members, for me, to point out some of the things that have happened since then. So on arriving, there was an improvement plan drawn up based on the recommendations in the audit report. So some quick wins done. We implemented KPIs immediately based on some of those issues that were there, so we could start to see improvement. We brought six additional staff in to help try to reduce the backlog of rent arrears. And at the time, the caseloads were immense for each of those property officers to the point where the service falling over. We started to reduce arrears then based on the additional staff and being able to, to review the rent. But also we brought in a rental officer who started chasing rent arrears for us. Some of that work now has had to halt because of the pandemic and the... Can people hear me? Okay, I've just had a notice that I'm getting poor quality wifi. So that, some of the work on arrears has had to halt because of the legislation that was brought in during the pandemic. But we are picking that up now that some of that legislation has been lifted and starting to progress that. We also at the time reviewed the estimated capital receipts that the capital programme was based on and reduced expectations there and made sure there was a proper planned programme that sat behind that number. There was a brand new asset management policy agreed at full council last year as part of the budget suite of reports that looked at acquisition and disposals and set out when we would acquire and when we would dispose of assets. And then, as I said previously, SIF were brought in to complete the review. They're at the moment drawing up a new asset management plan and a new asset management strategy. For our health and safety procedures, they've reviewed the governance structure around property. And we have implemented a corporate property group now, which is cross-council. And they've also given us a roadmap for implementing a corporate landlord function so that all the facilities management will sit in one place. And now there is no property report going through, particularly around disposals, which doesn't detail clearly the consultation that's taken place with all councillors. So I think it's Jeanette next, is it, on the slide, unless people have got questions for me?
I may stop third if it's okay, purely because I think it would be easier when there's a kind of, the slides are fresh and elected members are, so they have the opportunity to ask questions then, rather than toward the end. And I think councillor Banks has indicated, it might have been in respect of Tony's earlier comments. But I'll bring councillor Banks in now.
No, I'm sorry, Chair. I've took it down. I'm okay with that.
Brilliant. Okay, well, that's fine then. Okay, Mel, I think then if you're, or you're finished there and elected members don't have any questions about that specific part of the presentation, please, Jeanette, if you could continue.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to talk briefly about the decision-making and particularly relating to the role of the statutory officers group that the chief executive mentioned earlier on. There are two key areas of the constitution for decision-making. We have the scheme of delegation and we have contract standing orders. Obviously, the scheme of delegation outlines the body or individual who can take the decision and contract standing orders set out the rules and regulations within which the organisation can transact. So for the purposes of this report, I'd like to draw members' attention to some changes that we've made very recently to the scheme. If I can take you to page 17 of the report, bullet points two and three, scheme of delegation to be reviewed so that management oversight of the areas which have been identified for inspection now lies directly with one of the statutory officers. Also, all matters related to acquisitions and disposals in respect of property and asset management that Mel was just talking about, they're also now subject to review by the statutory officer group. Page 19 and 20 of the report sets out what the statutory officers group is and what it does. As the chief exec mentioned before, it comprises of chief executive, the monitoring officer, the Section 151 officer and the divisional manager for governance, audit and assurance. At the moment, it's meeting on at least a weekly basis and oversees a focused agenda on key governance issues and advises of findings directly to the senior management team, the acting mayor and Cabinet and obviously to this select committee. If I can take the committee to page 35 and 36 of the report, which is part of appendix one and the improvement plan. Page 35 and 36, you'll see an itinerary of the activity of the statutory officer group and you naturally see how long it's been in existence, February 2017. So you'll see in looking at that improvement plan, some of the work which it's undertaken in that period. But I think most relevant for us at the moment is page 36 and that last milestone of December 2020. And you'll see that actions agreed by the statutory officers group at that point was that all certificate payments in highways and development service areas will not only be reviewed by the head of finance for region and communities and then approved by the Section 151 officer, but will also go into the statutory officers group. And similarly, all delegated decisions in the service areas subject to inspection are also being reviewed by the statutory officers group as an additional layer of governance. Can I emphasise, Chair, unless this, so that this doesn't cause any concern for members, that this is not an override of the scheme of delegation or of the powers that currently sit within individual offices or indeed with Cabinet or full council. This is about putting in an additional layer of overview and it's being carried out by those officers who have a statutory duty to ensure that there is lawfulness and that there is financial regularity. So I hope members will appreciate the purpose behind this. And for want of a better phrase, won't see it as some sort of power grab by a group of officers. It is actually in there to support the decision-making processes that are set out in the constitution.
I can wait till the end if you prefer, but it was a point I was going to allude to that perhaps if you were being sceptical, and I'm not being sceptical, but to play devil's advocate, if you will, you could argue that it does reflect a significant concentration of power. So two questions I would have on that. Are decisions made by consensus if there's disagreements within the statutory officer group? How do you come to that decision in the end? And also, how closely might this replicate what goes on in the local authorities and other courses, for instance?
On the first point, Chair, about whether we make decisions by agreement or not. Firstly, I'd make the point that it's not a decision-making body as such. It's, it's not the final decision-making body. For example, if you look at the terms of reference as set out in the report, it refers to an oversight by the, by the group. But that doesn't mean that a decision will stop there. If it's a key decision which is en route to Cabinet, the statutory officers group will look at it, ensure that all the relevant information the Cabinet may want to see is in there, or indeed anybody who is making a delegated decision has all the relevant information. Because as statutory officers, we do have an overview across the organisation, which can only assist in ensuring that we have informed decision-making. In terms of whether it replicates what's happening in other authorities, I think it's been interesting that since the publication of this report, we've asked from other authorities about the makeup of the group and how it functions, because they've been quite interested in the role it can play in supporting decision-making. And again, I emphasise that phrase of supporting good decision-making.
Okay, I appreciate that. If you may, Jeanette, just councillor O'Brien, I think's got a question as well. Is that okay?
Yes, sure.
Sorry, councillor O'Brien, can you unmute? I think you're still on mute.
Sorry, I am. So I am. Sorry, I, I thought I'd unmuted and I had...
We've all, we've all been there tonight. We've all been there.
Yes, thank you, Chair, and thanks to Jeanette. And personally, I'd like to say I welcome the fact that we have senior officers overviewing all these matters. My plea is that all of this comes to audit and governance, governance clearly, maybe as appendices so that we don't have longer agendas, but that we can see the specifics. In particular, I think it's very good that senior officers get together on a regular basis because it might stop a silo mentality, which I'm very much against. But I think that we've got to have a whole council look at all of this, but we also need to be able to scrutinise it. So again, I'd say clear objectives that are measurable and then we can try and have some overview about performance and cost. And it's Chair and thanks, Jeanette.
Thank you, councillor O'Brien. And I was about to come on to, on the second bullet point, an issue that you've just raised and it's about the information coming back to committee. And because we have now put this arrangement in place where the statutory officers group will see contractual spend on highways and will also be looking at delegated decisions, including acquisitions and disposals, as part of that decision taken by the officers in December, those lists of spend and of acquisitions and disposals will be coming through to this committee in future. So there'll be full visibility of the, the lists that are going through the statutory officers group.
Thanks, Jeanette. I just want to bring councillor Jennings in because I saw her hand emerge as you were responding to councillor O'Brien. Councillor Jennings?
Thank you, Chair. Like, February 2017 seems to be a trigger point for the creation of the new group. I'm just wondering, looking at where the, the red flags were coming from, internal audit, senior officers, external liaisons, do we know what, are we allowed to know what those triggers were that made that decision come about?
Right, so the team related to the operation, Chair. Officers are being based in here, Chair. There were certain events at that period which made it sensible for the statutory officers to come together on a more regular basis because of information that was being sought at the time from individual statutory officers. You'd appreciate the integrity of investigations and the limited information that we are allowed to disclose.
Thank you. I thought that might be the answer, but I just thought I'd try it anyway, but thank you for that.
Sorry, Jeanette, so let you continue. Apologies.
And the, the only other points that I wanted to make, Chair, we've just talked about the additional information which will be coming to committee around disposals and contractual spend, not covered in this report, but obviously highly topical. You'll be aware that the city council has been operating both strategic and tactical groups in response to the pandemic. By virtue of the nature of the situation that we face, there's some urgent decisions which need to be taken by both strategic and tactical groups. It's just to reassure members that all of those decisions taken under any emergency powers are collated across all of the groups and that that list of decisions that have been taken so far will be coming to the next meeting of this committee, so they will have an overview of any spend that has been pursuant to those emergency powers in relation to the Covid response. And the last, the last point I wanted to, sorry, Chair.
I was just going to say, sorry, interrupt the digital start, and so my apologies. I was going to say, I think that is a really important point, that COVID governance and understanding decisions that are being made, you understand that they have to be made quickly, absolutely. And, you know, it's a serious public health matter. But I think also when we're thinking about the COVID recovery programme, is there a, absent a role for scrutiny to be more proactive in that sense?
Of course, I agree with you. Yeah. You want some? Just some? Yeah, there'll, there'll be a report on the corporate recovery response to February's meeting, Chair.
Okay.
And the, the last point for me, Chair, the bullet point is around the members' code of conduct. And the acting mayor touched upon this at the head of the meeting, but I'll just cover it in brief. There was a members' working party that met this week. The LGA model code of conduct was discussed at that meeting. The release of that in December last year was timely because the members' working group was looking at that in any event. And I think the working group was unanimously supportive of the model code. And I think the working group was unanimously supportive of the model code and looked for how we would be adopting that going forward. Not mentioned on the bullet point, Chair, but there was also the discussion at the Members' Working Group, the code of practice that had been circulated around the relationships with developers and rules around meeting with developers for the support and protection of councillors. There was some discussion around that code of practice, it's been broadly welcomed, although there was some very constructive suggestions about how it could be made a little bit more user friendly for councillors in terms of the way the planning code works. So that's been taken away for some more work to be done. And there was also some lengthy discussion at the meeting about member training and the member training programme being developed going forward, and the working group are reviewing the training programme currently, and some materials are going to come back to the next meeting, Chair, and that group is meeting on a monthly basis at the moment.
And Jeanette, can I bring councillor Corbett in? I've just noticed the hand.
I was just saying that I'm a member of that group and it was a really useful meeting. The LGA Code of Conduct was excellent and we added in the socio-economic aspect of the Equality Act, because obviously in Liverpool, we take that very seriously, even though it's not, hasn't been commenced by the government, but we've been using that framework for a long time now. And also what Jeanette said as well about the way that we can make it more straightforward for people to see clearly exactly what we're talking about when we're talking about this. So it was a really useful group chaired by councillor Natalie Nicholas. Thanks, Chair.
I think we're on to the next slide now, Chair, if there are no further questions.
No, I'm happy to proceed.
Okay, Chair, just in terms of Covid, to mention, you have raised with me in the past about having a report to the Select Committee about how the Covid decision framework operates. So as Jeanette was saying, we'll have a report at the February meeting about the framework and the recovery plan. What I wanted to cover was just a discussion about the role of the committee and the journey over the last two years and some of the paperwork that you received as members, as you see here, how that's going to operate going forward. As you know, you've got a statutory role to approve the accounts. As part of that paperwork, you've got what's called an annual governance statement, which accompanies it, which gets signed off by the committee. For the last two years, that has given what we call an acceptable assurance in terms of our governance and risk frameworks. And obviously that's with a backdrop of austerity, Covid, and also the ongoing two police investigations. Meself as the head of orders gave the same opinion, it's independent opinion by myself. The other reports you've had in the last two years, sort of at the end of each year, so for nineteen, it was the fifth of December two thousand and eighteen, you had reports of the control frameworks that were brought in that year around developments. You agreed to the developers checklist, the due diligence checklist, that we now operate and is embedded in the system. That was updated by the February meeting in October twenty twenty, when we improved that following the fractional investment recommendations from James Corbett's panel. We had the fractional investment recommendations approved by the panel, by the committee, and then by the Cabinet. Jane controlled further on that, from the recommendations, there's only the code of practice yet to implement, so they have happened. Just on the annual governance statement, that outlines the framework of control, the role of the statutory officers group, the role of the due diligence group which supports the statutory officers group, which has got all the relevant service areas you would expect on it in terms of feeding it in, and the role of directors. So for the last three years, all the directors have been requested to sign their own assurance statements which support the annual governance statement, and we have developed them in the last three years and quality assured them through orders in the last two. In the improvement plan, you'll see quite clearly for the next period, we've introduced, and you agreed that at the October council, we will have a quarterly performance dashboard around governance for each directors. And the first versions then will be completed at the end of January, and they will be reported into the Select Committee, and they cover areas like delegated decisions and decision making over the last quarter, declarations of interest and conflicts of interest, risks, information management. There's a whole about seven issues or items which we reported in, again, using the term, it's a bit of a hard process, our first versions will be end of January for reporting in February, but that's to have a close monitor on in terms of that framework moving forward. The last thing was just to say, the appendices attached to the report, appendix one, indicates some key appointments on the framework, but also key initiatives brought in and completed over the last two years. Appendix two indicates the improvement plan going forward for members to contribute to. As Tony said, it needs to be morphed into a more specific performance plan that members can monitor closely, taking on councillor O'Brien's comments as well. And appended to that, there's some bespoke improvement plans for the four service areas, which are the focus of the inspection. So it was just to highlight to members the roles you've had yourself as Select Committee members in the last two years overseeing the governance and the frameworks, and the improvements that's been made from those end of year reports each December and then October last year. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. I think, I think it'd be fair to say, Chris, Tony, Jeanette, that, and Mel, that those slides very much kind of captured the flavour of the entire document and the entire report, so you've done very, very well to condense what is a long report down, so I think that would be very much appreciated by members. So at this point, what I am going to ask, even though members have had the opportunity to periodically, at the end of each slide, raise their queries and whatnot, I'm going to ask if there are any further questions arising, perhaps around the specifics or the appendices, for instance. I've seen councillor Makinson's hand first, then councillor Corbett, so councillor Makinson first, please.
Thank you, Chair. Very helpful. Getting feedback, I think.
That's not great. Shall we try again, sorry, councillor Makinson?
Okay, can you hear me now?
That's a little clearer.
Good, right. It's a very helpful document. Not surprisingly, there is a particular emphasis on highways in the report, and certainly in my ward, I've recently been notified of an important highways contract being called back for review, delaying the scheme, because it was signed off by someone who's now under investigation. I'd like to know how many other contracts that would apply to and what process is actually in place to manage these reviews, so that obviously we want a proper review, but we don't want to delay projects more than necessary, so they actually end up costing more than already contracted. Secondly, a lot of expenditure in highways has been from grants, mostly recently we've had the Covid grants, which have had to be spent with quite a degree of urgency, understandably. So what are the risks that any irregularities may have been caused either by fraud or by procedural failure could actually result in clawback of grants? And finally, just referring to page forty one, appendix four, of the appendix, the fraud and corruption awareness training, which it appears that was recommended in December two thousand and eighteen, so why did it take two years to introduce and why was the decision taken in December to make this mandatory? Was that planned or was that a result of the arrests that took place a week earlier? Thank you, Chair.
Sounds good.
So Chair, I don't know the details of the specific contract that councillor Makinson picked up, very happy to have a look at it, but I will say to you is, of course, we need to make sure that things are done properly with appropriate probity and clarity and that there is an audit trail for the decisions we're taking. But equally, we don't want to put in place a bureaucracy that stifles things from happening and impacts upon delivery of services and outcomes for the people of Liverpool. And we always refer to good governance as having just enough grip, so that we make sure that those things are right, but what we don't do is get in the way of progress. And that's the way in which as statutory officers and as managers implementing your agendas and the Cabinet's agenda, the council's agenda, that we work very much in that way. Very happy to look at the specifics, and we'll pick that up at councillor Makinson afterwards. And with regard to any risks of clawback, we're not aware of any risks that are there at the present time. Obviously, we will keep things like that under consideration as the police investigation and any audit investigations unfold, but we're not aware of any risks at the present time. I'll just hand over to Chris to talk about the training issue that councillor Makinson highlighted.
Just to show that I'm on track, Andrew, to answer your question, there's a Covid decision making group that me and Jeanette sit on, it's also got a sub-group in terms of the grants, so some of the paperwork around that has been rolled out and having the phrase that Tony's used in our group, it's got need orders to run. Obviously, they have to follow guidance, so the initial was about in terms of getting the grants out, but I'll cover that or will cover that in the report that comes in February, so you can ask the question about the detail of how that was rolled out. In terms of the fraud, anti-fraud bribery and corruption training for staff, that was initially set up, as you say, drafted in eighteen, but it was rolled onto the e-learning system in nineteen. Members or officers took it up, and there's been, there was a review undertaken on what the mandatory training elements were for officers. So there's quite a lot on the list, so during that period, that list had to be reviewed because it was around about eight or nine. So in terms of what happened, it was a case of, quite quickly it happened because officers were taking the training up, that's now taken place, there was officers already doing the training anymore, it wasn't mandatory, if you wanted figures on that, I can give you it. But overseeing the training, as I said before, is the due diligence group, it's almost sixteen, seventeen officers of, senior middle managers, letting sure that their officers are trained in terms of the roles they've got at the frontline, that was outlined in some of the reports in December. The other issue that was discussed in the Members Development Group on Tuesday was, we can't make training mandatory for members, but there's support in that group to identify what might be essential and get the group leaders to ensure that the members do that of the group. We will provide them training, there'll be an e-learning course, because you're going to be able to have access to the learning club in the current climate for code of conduct training, because it can be morphed quite quickly into e-learning courses, and won't be spoken on, and I mentioned this to Leon, we will put that draft packages through the Members Development Group, so they've got the member focus, because the members still think it's too often so like and doesn't reflect their roles. I've agreed with the Members Development Group, they'll sign off the e-learning packages and a couple of them will come to the next meeting, which will be in February. So, thank you, Chair.
Andrew, are you satisfied with that for now?
That's helpful for now, I think maybe some of these issues we can take up in future meetings when there's more detail available.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I think that there's certainly offer of more information to come from Tony and Chris. Councillor Corbett?
Thank you, Chair. And just to say, I echo what Chris said about the core training that councillors will be, will be having, and also we encourage each of the party wits to keep a list of which councillors have carried that training out, so everybody knew where everybody was up to, so we could really push that, although it's not mandatory, it's really, really important and that's a way of being able to take it into the parties to push, to make sure. It's also useful for every councillor anyway to be able to have that. I think it's important to say that the statutory officers group actually has been really key, as has the due diligence group, and that links back into the fractional investment report that I chaired, which as you remember was done cross-party. And just to remind people that all those recommendations were agreed by Cabinet, but it's key, I think, to notice that the, to note that the recommendations themselves were put forward by the councillors only at that point. We specifically had a closed meeting, because I chaired it, and got the flip chart out with all the councillors on that fractional investment group, wrote out the main recommendations, all of the eleven of them, and then we, then the report was backfilled from there. I think, I don't know whether Tony would agree with this, but with the inspector in, it may be worth the inspector looking at the recommendations that in that fractional investment report that we've now agreed, that relate to the government at a national level, because there are some there that would pick up what councillor O'Brien said before about making sure that silos are cracked. Unless we can work this properly across all the sections of the council, it will be weakened, and that needs national government's response, as well as the national planning policy framework, they need to look at that as well, so I'd suggest that perhaps Max has a look at that. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, councillor Corbett. Tony, do you have anything to comment on, Matt?
Just to say, the inspection team have a copy of the fractional investment report and we'll highlight those issues. What I can say from discussions as well with senior civil servants that we have on a regular basis, that there is real interest at MHLG, other government departments, in the things that we're doing, and we'll keep the dialogue going with them as well and highlight these issues.
Great, thanks, Tom. Councillor O'Brien?
Thank you again, Chair. I have been banging on a bit, I know, about specifics rather than generalities, but going back to what councillor Makinson was talking about, about this appendix two and the table of the improvement plan, where it says, I think it's box one of the second tranche, how would something like that apply to something that does cross over departments and is dear to my own heart, being Chair of Planning, and that's section one oh six. So of course, in planning, all we do is agree a section one oh six amount that developers would have to pay, but of course, that then can cover acquisitions and dispersments, because quite often that might result in, say, a new playground, new tree planting that might not even be on the site of the actual planning permission. And I just wondered if our officers could give me some idea of how would all that get fed back to members, decisions about section one oh six? I know I've been to regeneration committee to look at it there, but would that come back to audit and governance in the end, or will we only hear about it vaguely?
We are currently working and reviewing section one oh six monies from a finance perspective rather than from a planning officer perspective, so I'm more than happy to bring a report back into this committee on the position of one oh sixes. One thing we want to be very clear about in finance is that that section one oh six monies was part of our capital programme planning in the future. There is a range of about fourteen million at the moment that is unprogrammed, so I'm more than happy to bring the report back.
Chair, just to add to that, we'll have discussions with the Chair of the Regen Select Committee and with the appropriate officers, and we'll consider appending the detail of the schemes, what the money's spent on, to the information that Mel's bringing forward as well. So this committee, as councillor O'Brien has asked for, gets sight of the impact of section one oh six spend, and you can look at it from your perspective as well. Very happy to go away and look at that.
Thank you very much for that, Mel, Antonia, that would be helpful, even if it's not part of the main committee report, which is a lot to read, people are interested, it would be nice to have, I'd like to find some of our appendices, I'd be also concerned about it, because I think the government are going to take that local responsibility away from us, and I think it's important that we do, for a while at least, know exactly what benefit it was to have local control of section one oh six going forward into the future. So I would really welcome that, thank you.
Thanks, councillor O'Brien. Are there any further questions? Okay, councillor Roberts, sorry.
Thanks, Chair. Just quickly, while we're on the topic of section one oh six, I sometimes worry that developers, when they offer us, when they offer to put things, to develop sites in lieu of section one oh six, I sometimes think that they get away with providing what would have been an amount of one oh six, otherwise... would have been an amount of 106, otherwise granted. And I think that's one of the failings of the section 106 development game system in general. And I'm all in favour of the recommendations which have been made around 106 generally. But I do think that the system itself is problematic. So I was wondering if officers had any thoughts or had done any looks at whether the community infrastructure levy system might be more appropriate in Liverpool. And I'd more generally like to know what people's thoughts are around that.
Chair, Sam Campbell is here, I believe. I wonder if perhaps Sam could come in. I'm more than happy to give a view, but Sam, as our head of planning, is probably best positioned to refer to the merits of section 106 versus community infrastructure levy. Sorry to put you off the spot, Sam.
No, it's okay. Can you hear me? Because my internet connection's quite poor. Sorry. We have looked at SIL and it's all connected to the infrastructure plan. But we are reviewing things and we have done a review of section 106, which we had a report back to us from Arup in the summer to see where the failures. But we didn't have an infrastructure gap to support the community, the infrastructure levy at that time. But it is an ongoing review that we're undertaking frequently. And of course, we've got the white paper that's emerging that recently came out. And that could all change how we collect contributions to whatever, to open space, to trees, to schools, to whatever infrastructure. So it is a moving feast at the minute, but it's certainly on the programme to have a look at going forward.
And Chair, just adding to that from my point of view, I don't think there is, I think it's probably impossible to design a perfect system because it depends what lens, you know. There are lots of different participants in the development process and they will all have a slightly different view of the world. The community and impact on community is absolutely key. Whatever system is in place, it's really important that we have consistency, transparency and accountability in that system to make sure that from initial decision and negotiations, at the time the planning consent is given through to delivery of the scheme, spend of the section 106, impact of this reporting back and this transparency across the whole thing. If there's any changes of amounts throughout that process, it's all recorded with the reasons for that and appropriately reported so that the public, members and, you know, anybody else that wants to look at this can see absolute clarity as to what's happened. And I think the old adage that daylight is the bell, sunlight's the best disinfectant, when it comes to payments by developers in this sort of situation, I'm a great believer in absolute transparency. And that's what we're working to make sure is in place.
Thanks, Tony. And as a kind of ancillary point, when perhaps you are talking about payments, we're talking about the principle of section 106, kind of people seeing the tangible outputs in the neighbourhoods. I wonder if you may just talk briefly about collection. To use your phrase, how confident are you that we have a grip on collection of section 106 contributions?
Yeah. I think if I'm brutally honest, and Mel might want to come in on this as well, Chair, I think it's work in progress. I think we're making progress. I think the council is very much more challenging than it has been, but we've still got some way to go to get to a position where we can say, you know, we've got that assurance in place. Having said that as well, it's absolutely appropriate to say that things change during the, from a planning consent through to the delivery of a scheme. It can take, that can take a number of years, particularly for big schemes. And, you know, the economic cycle can change. A whole host of other things can change as part of that. So changes will be made, but my key point is that's transparent. The absolute important thing is that we're able to collect the monies and then make sure the monies are spent on the right things in a timely fashion. So the appropriate communities can get the benefit of section 106. And as I said, I don't know what Mel's view on this is, but I would say honestly, it's work in progress, but we are making progress.
Part of the reason for the corporate debt policy coming forward is to make sure we've got a clear sense on the way we collect debt. But the pandemic has meant that we are not in the same place we would normally be at this time of year in terms of collecting debt. Two-fold, not only because of the legislation, but also because we've had to direct some of those staff into business grants, to paying the business grants to people. So, but the corporate debt policy that will come forward will start to address that. And we are looking at the structure that sits behind that model and whether or not debt collection within the authority should, and debt management should be a centralised team until we have the expertise in one place. Because it's an area that does require expertise.
Thanks, Mel. Councillor O'Brien, do you have another question? Show your hand, she's up.
Not another question, but if I may make a supplementary point about what I was saying. I just wanted to add that I don't think it's fruitcake that's been bogged down with it here. But I do think that if we heard our reporting back to audit and governance, it would open up the debate more and it would make, as Tony said, it's so important about community and transparency. Would then be able to see the community it has helped. And we'd also perhaps be able to be a bit more transparent about the fact that, you know, the planning law says, rather than section 106 on a different site, we should get the environmental improvements on the sites we give the planning permission for. And maybe that would become clearer to people, the difference. But I'd certainly welcome the debate.
Can I bring Wendy in? Microphone Wendy?
Sorry, I keep taking my hand down. I'm forgetting to take my microphone off. I've got a number of points because I know I was summing up on the last slide of this. So I can bring it in then if you want. Or it was just on the section 106 really, because I think there are two issues. There's the overall section 106 money that comes in and obviously the collection of that. And it comes in in stages, obviously, as people are aware and keeping on top of that. And also, as you say, the change in those contracts and whether the debt for that is being collected. And then it's applications that are made into that fund from local councillors in respect to their communities. And certainly that procedure was tightened up in respect of, you know, a member and officer panel and those reports in full, you know, going to the committee so people can see them. So that there has been a process in place, you know, certainly for a couple of years where that's happening, you know, so people can say what the application was, you know, why that was either accepted or it wasn't appropriate because it didn't meet the criteria. And as you say, I think all of these things need to be brought together in one report. So that's easier for people to see and see. Because I think that even though we've done quite a bit of training over time, there's been reports and presentations about section 106, and still there is, I think there still is a misunderstanding around what it is for, when it is allocated and how it is distributed as well and what it can be used for, as councillor O'Brien's just said. So I think that, but I have got some, do you want me to make my other points now, Leon, or?
I think so, yeah. I think you've hit twenty-four places on the last slide.
Yeah. And I think what's important is for us all to remember that this document that we've got this evening is a live document and it'll be a changing document. Obviously, it's come here for pre-scrutiny, which is really important. So it's not come after it's been approved by Cabinet. And I think that actually shows our commitment to that scrutiny and making sure for all of us, both members and officers, you know, we're really taking, you know, every avenue possible to improve this document as we go forward and to improve the scrutiny of everything we do, both to make sure that we get both best value and social value in what we're doing as a council. Also, I think as well, you know, we've spoken a lot, we've asked a lot of questions of officers tonight about process, you know, things they do. And I think we all have to take an individual responsibility as councillors in our role as scrutinising reports right across the board. I know we all sit on various select committees, but actually, the role of scrutiny is one for all of us. And it's important, particularly on those committees we sit on, that we do prepare for those committees, that we read our documents, we ask relevant questions. And we also, I think it's not just the role of audit and governance to oversee that. I think it's the role of every single select committee to be asking some of the questions that have been asked here tonight. So I think as part of that member training and officer training is to go over some of those issues that people have rightly raised tonight and the questions people should be asking when they're talking about services right across the council. I think, you know, if we're going to get that consistent improvement, which we all want, because what that does is give us better services for our residents. But also, you know, if we're getting best value in relation, not just to cost, but quality, you know, that's going to improve outcomes for us all. And we need to make sure that we are actually welcoming and open to those critical friends, whether they be each other, you know, sort of officers or other people we call in to do that. I think it's really important that we understand where we may have an interest or a conflict of interest. And certainly, you know, as local councillors, if people are coming to see us, you know, in our wards or wanting to discuss issues with us, that we're really clear on the member conduct issues. And certainly, you know, if we are requested, particularly in relation to meeting with developers, et cetera, or things, we're not sure if that, those meetings only take place with an officer presence. And I know a lot of those are within our protocols anyway. But I think for all of us, it is about that reminder and that constant revision of our training and updating, you know. And it's not about your length of experience as a councillor. It's about how much you keep up to date with current policy and procedure. And I think that's important for all of us. I think sort of this committee, from when I've attended, has always been really open in its scrutiny and, you know, sort of does really ask, you know, pertinent questions. But again, I think if people think there are things, as I said at the beginning, that aren't included in this document and they feel it should be, you know, obviously, people may have read it in more depth than others. If over the next few days, people have got ideas, if they forward it in, so we can look at that, you know, prior to it going to Cabinet. That's all I've got to say. Thanks, Chair.
I think that's really important, understanding that in terms of this document itself and the wider programme of this committee, it is always a work in progress and we are open receptive. And we want to know what members want to get on the agenda. Councillor Mackinson?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, councillor Simon. Very helpful comments. One thing I would raise, and I feel like I've raised it at every one of these select committees for some time now, is the issue of companies' governance. And it does have an important contribution to make to this process. We do need to ensure that the Companies' Governance Committee meets regularly and there are other procedures in place to ensure that what goes on in the companies that we own is properly reported back and scrutinised by councillors.
Thanks, Andrew. I totally agree with that. And certainly, obviously, I know it was raised at the last committee in December and that's being fed back and arrangements in place for that to happen. So it's really important to everybody, as we said, every level of scrutiny that we're looking at. And certainly, that comment was fed back and is being actioned.
And one comment I wanted to make in relation to the wider documents that we've scrutinised this evening, it just relates to the correspondence from Captain Francis from the Ministry of Housing, Communities and Local Government who commended the local authority on their positive and engaged response a month ago. Now, I'm not sure to what extent you are at liberty to talk about the inspection, but you think that would be the feeling from Whitehall now? Will we still be commenting Liverpool on our positive and engaged response? What do you think?
You're on your twenty, right?
Done the wrong one again, sorry. Certainly, from my point of view, we've always made it clear from day one that we wanted to fully cooperate, you know, with the inspection. You know, we want to be open and transparent. We want to learn from this inspection and improve, you know, it's part of that continuous improvement journey. But also, we already had an action plan in place and it was important for us to continue with that action plan. The inspection itself may come up with other recommendations, you know, that they believe we need to look at. But for us, the work that we've been doing as a council and by, you know, the scrutiny that's been taking place and the different scrutiny panels, select committees, et cetera, we already had a programme of work, quite a large programme of work that was taking place. And certainly, you know, I've only had one discussion presently, you know, obviously with the inspector, and that was just an introductory, you know, sort of hello, really over teams and where he outlined largely what Tony said earlier in the presentation about the three areas, you know, that he would be looking at. But certainly, you know, from the feedback, you know, I've had, and I think it's important to note as well, you know, that I will be meeting as well with the monitoring officers and the statutory officers group regularly to get feedback. So, you know, sort of we can do work as we're going along and bring things here and to other committees if we feel we need to make improvements on this plan again. But certainly, I think the feedback so far has been positive. I don't know, Tony, whether you'd want to comment anymore?
Yeah, I think so. It's a really, really interesting question, Chair. It's very early in the process. What I would say is, on the positive side, we have very good engagement with senior officials at the department, at the Ministry of Housing, Communities and Local Government, in particular, but other officials at a government level. There's been a lot of engagement between government and Liverpool on Covid over the last ten months. And I think the city's been seen in a positive light, not just the council, but working with our partners, including the city region combined authority as part of that. All of that is very positive. But I don't in any way underestimate the seriousness of the issues that the inspection team are looking at. The very fact that we're having a statutory inspection is because the sector state has taken this really, really seriously. And there are some very significant issues that they're looking at. And I think the, all I can say at this stage is that from an officer point of view, we will be completely open. And Wendy's been very clear that that's her stance as well, that we'll be completely open and cooperate with the inspection. We seek to get as much out of it as we can in terms of learning opportunities. I hope we're seen in a positive light in terms of the progress we've made so far and the commitment of the whole council to the improvement journey we've set out tonight and the robustness of that improvement journey. If we're able to do that, I think it will stand us in good stead. But I don't want anybody to go away from this meeting in any doubt at all about the seriousness of this situation that's being of the circumstances that led us to have a statutory inspection. And I think it's, I don't want to overplay that, but I think it's important that we all do absolutely recognise that case.
Thank you, Tony. I'm going to move to some final remarks if I may. And I'll give one further opportunity for members to ask questions. But it's clear that collectively as members, we have got a lot of work to do. And with that in mind, there will be additional dates to go on the calendar. We've already discussed those, the 26th of January, 25th of February and the 25th of March. And I think to borrow Tony's phrase, to ensure that there is enough collective grip and all elected members feel that, we will be also inviting other chairs of select committees and members of other select committees to attend these meetings. The suggestions and points raised at the meeting will be fed back to Cabinet and they're considering the report tomorrow. I also suggest that the Republic is again circulated, it already has been, but is again circulated to all members to see if any other members who have not been able to attend may submit any suggestions or comments. I have asked officers that it was referred to the Public Affairs Committee and have an update on the, and in the February meeting in terms of the Covid decision-making framework. So that just refers back to what we've discussed earlier, an understanding and a scrutiny of how decisions around Covid have been made and will be made going forward. In addition, and this is just for the members of the committee, I'll be contacting all members of the committee. And Andrew's also alluded to what he wants to see on future agendas, to arrange a meeting with members to ensure the work programme and items for the agenda are discussed going forward. Now, one final point, as a committee, I don't think we should underestimate what we've done in terms of some of the budget scrutiny, in terms of monitoring the citizen support scheme. in terms of monitoring the citizen support scheme, in terms of challenging some decisions that were to be made on the Commercial Property Investment Fund. And also in terms of some of the requests we've made for contextualising information in terms of our performance as a core city. I think there is more to do, but I'm confident that we can do. And the spirit of tonight's meeting very, very much reflects that. I think the quality of scrutiny has been excellent. The emphasis has been on scrutiny of speculation, the tone of the debate, I think no one could criticise. It's been extremely conrading, it's been polite. I think all questions have been reasonable. And I think driven by a genuine desire to improve and get the answers that we need and support our city through, you know, what is, Tony's already referred to as quite a difficult time. So I would commend members on that and ask going forward that we continue that. Now, before I ask that we agree, that we note the report at this stage and approve the approval plan, are there any further questions? Okay, that does not appear to be the case. So at this stage, I'll ask our members of the committee in agreement that we note the report at this stage and improve the improvement plan, taking on board any comments made at the meeting that will then be reported to the Cabinet. Is that agreed?
Agreed. Well said, Chair.
Okay, well, if I can, I can thank both the officers for their time. I know there's a number of officers here this evening. Obviously, Mike who's facilitated on all of the committee services, staff who facilitated the meeting and of course, elected members. And it has been a good meeting and I look forward to seeing you all in due course.